We'll go ahead and come back for recess at ten thirty, back into our regular work session. Our next item is a timed item, and it's the Silver Lake, RFPD, and North Lake EMS ambulance staffing discussion. And we have Chief Gary Raines heading this up, so...
What's the time limit?
Do you mind up to twelve?
Lunch happens at twelve.
We're gonna keep this fairly short and brief. We did make some copies of pertinent information that you guys can read. We'll give you a brief overview of what we want to do. Basically, we're looking for a variance to some state rules, and we'll go through that. First, we'd like to give you an overview of what is actually happening up there. Colin Smith will take the floor and kind of explain where we are up there in relation to A and S services.
I think that'll be great, Gary. And I think I can speak for the board on this. As you present this, just be mindful, I believe, we as a board are going to do everything in our power to help this situation. We know it's a bad situation. It plagues a lot of places, not just Lake County, but we're most concerned about Lake County right now, so as you present, just be mindful of that.
All right. You like the sitting chair?
Yes.
If you don't mind.
Thanks for your time. I'm Colin Smith from Silver Lake. I do special projects for Silver Lake. The overview is essentially that last year we had about seven hundred total ambulance runs in the county that were staffed by less than thirty people. There were more people rostered, but not many people run or are able to run because they have response lines. We're getting to the point where some ambulance nine-one-one requests are not being staffed, in other words, nobody's responding. That encounters us in a place where we end up having to take an ambulance from one department and a medic from another department and intercept. So that means that the response times have gotten a lot more. It's not usually to forty minutes, forty minutes of tone outs, asking for assistance. And that's why we called a meeting, was it last month, about the state of crisis. Not sure if the commissioners are aware, but we run our ambulance service areas with your permission and the state's provision. It's a cooperative agreement. If we miss three ambulance calls, that's a fallout, and the state will get involved. The state will get involved with the ambulance service area issues. This also means you'll be getting asked to run as well, so... So we're in a state of crisis, and we've got some mitigations that we're trying to do, some short-term, immediate, some more long-term. And that's what Chief Raines is gonna talk to you about.
The baseline is, the county is fundamentally responsible. It's all pulled together back in the mid-nineties.
Yes, sir.
And the county has an agreement with each of the ambulance units on performance and all this. And we are at a point that we need to support you guys for the ambulance.
Absolutely, we're at a crunch point.
Colin, is any way, is Gary, are you gonna speak to, just for a little bit of history? Because, you know, these small communities in particular, you guys understand the situation. Historically, we've had a lot of volunteerism, and we know that that's changing, and as you're aware too with the work. But I go back to the seventies, I go back to the sixties when my grandfather had a stroke and living in Prairie City, and the ambulance from the hospital came out. They're born EMT units. And then in the seventies, my father-in-law was one of the first founders of the Paisley disaster, Ed Murphy. And so I'd just like a little bit of history, maybe not so much today, but a little bit on how the state, when we're doing this voluntarily, for the most part, how they can have so much hold on our communities and our ability to do whatever we can do to help out our citizens.
Okay. All of the departments are not, not the profit. But all of the ambulance equipment and the certifications are under the auspices of the state. Our ambulances are at the same requirements as the ones in downtown Portland. Our responders even lower, you know, a middle-aged rancher that volunteered to become an EMT aren't under the same rules and regulations as the folks in downtown Portland. They inspect our ambulances frequently, they inspect our certifications and training, and if there's a fallout, if there's a shortfall, technically they can shut you down. The big problem is if we miss three responses, in other words, nobody shows up and somebody's in trouble. Each one of those responses has to be reported to the state, and then that's when they'll start taking action.
Okay.
Now, Clarissa?
Somewhat. I'm just frustrated. I mean, I can't imagine...
We are. The average days of a responder in America, a volunteer, is in the late forties.
Yeah.
Ours is probably more like...
Sixties.
Sixties.
Yeah.
No kidding.
So I don't follow.
Yeah, you're off the hook today.
Yeah.
And essentially, it's a nationwide problem, and the young people are just not getting interested. We have a few, but not enough to take care of.
Well, the training reformists that have just escalated, I took the training back in nineteen seventy-four, and eighty-some hours to become certified. And I just applaud you folks, I know we're here to listen to some proposals, but I think it needs, especially since we have these things recorded, it just needs to be stated, your willingness to help out the community, the number of people's lives that have been saved over the years, the number of babies that have been born en route to hospitals that otherwise might not have made it into this world, it's just phenomenal, so... Sorry about getting sidetracked.
No, that's...
It's an important, it's an important...
It's a sacrifice.
Yes.
People are sacrificing a big chunk of their lives.
Yep.
And unfortunately, in our situation, a typical ambulance run is six hours, from call-out to back to station. And there's many times that you go to bed, get called out, and you're ready for breakfast, and then have to go to work. And that's a big burden.
Yep.
So some of our mitigation stuff we'll be talking about is essentially using what, you guys have the authority to ask for with the state, is that we can run an ambulance with just a driver and just a basic EMT unit, which will help us out. We're also looking for what we call a catch-and-release. Right now, as you know, if someone calls an ambulance and they wanna go to the hospital, they're going to the hospital, even if they're just having a bad day or a homeover or whatever. Many people use this as a taxi service. But we have to take, under the catch-and-release program, if they're not in extremes, we will be allowed to release them, whether it's not taken in, and provide some other alternative life, the shuttle service that takes people to the hospital. But that's all they're looking for, if you're right. Many people just want advice about what their medical condition is, and all they want to do is call. But then, once we respond, we're pretty much trapped into that cycle. So that's one of the other variances that we're looking for. Gary, let's be more than that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So, we've got lots of paper for your perusal. This here are the formal requests for the variance from both North Lake and Silver Lake. Second page is our mitigation proposals. We have to have that listed also. The second set of stuff is all the ORAs and ORSs that I'm gonna briefly go through. And what I did with those is highlight what is pertinent to look at. There's pages upon pages, as you know, ORAs and ORSs. We just highlighted what you really need to look at. And I'll go through them real quickly. What we're asking for is an ORS, six blah blah blah. Basically, the authority, which is the state of Oregon, may waive any of the requirements imposed by this chapter in medically disadvantaged areas, as determined by the Director of the Oregon Health Authority. We are in a medically disadvantaged area. So that's, you know, that's the primary thing. What we're asking for is variances for the ORSs and all the ORAs. Basically, what we're looking for, like Colin said, is having a two-person staffed ambulance. The ORS that we're trying to get a variance for, I'll just read it briefly. In order to operate a ground ambulance, the licensee shall have a qualified driver that meets the qualifications of RA Chapter three-three-three, Division two-fifty, which is in the ORS that I talked about before. And what happens is each level, each provided level, has its own little ORS that we have to address, so... Driver for a basic, say if we have a basic EMT basic in the back of the ambulance, we have a qualified driver. Qualifications for a basic is a driver that has EVOC and CPR, professional CPR, ready to take a call at this point. When you go to an intermediate or paramedic level, the driver has to be under the ORSs and ORAs, it has to be at least a basic, an EMT basic. And that's where we are, are greatly short of basics. We have EMRs, emergency medical responders. Matter of fact, what are we gonna graduate, another twelve?
Yeah, another twelve. We have a class going on right now, but it's not really applicable for our agencies. We need more basics.
Yeah. And that, in our mitigation efforts, I'll go through that, but... And then, same with the paramedic. If we run a paramedic, which we, you know, don't have, a paramedic also has to have a basic EMT as a requirement. Our variance is asking the state, actually asking you, to grant your permission for us to go to the state to ask for a variance, so we can run an EMT instead of with a basic, an EMT intermediate or an EMT paramedic with an EMR, EMR, emergency medical responder. They have just about the same amount of training as basic.
They do. And this in particular class got trained almost like a basic because of our instructor was at that level, and he just wanted to give them as much education as possible. If we are able to run an intermediate with an EMR, it takes the approval of you folks and the state and ours, medical advisor, to agree to all of that, so we can do that. But it would allow us a lot more abilities to cover our calls at a critical level of care, an ALS level of care.
So what is the medical advisor? We're, I don't know who it is in this day and age, but how is...
Physician advisor.
Physician advisor. Yeah, but I mean, whoever that person is, how are they feeling about this proposal?
We started, actually, we started the variance a few years ago.
Right, and I talked, it's Dr. Todd Tornay out of Bend. He used to be affiliated with the ER in St. Charles, but he now is on his own. And he's very supportive because he is very involved in our training and knows that our EMRs are trained at a very high level because of where we're at. We all have a lot of knowledge about our area and what's required. They train right alongside of us, so they know that when we're starting an IV, they know what they can do to help us. Whereas, you know, in other places, basics are the ones that usually know how to help the intermediates, advance, and paramedics. But our EMRs are very well-trained, and so Todd feels, Dr. Tornay feels, very comfortable with our decision. And I just, last night, dropped him a note with all of this information, and let him know we were coming here today. And he will be writing a letter of support that we can also, are required to send to the state.
Colin Veronica's letter here says, you need a letter from the county and your MD so the government can be there.
Yes, Dr. Tornay.
And then, need a letter from us, because we have a written agreement.
For our ASA.
And we need a letter that gives our exception to the state.
Yes, that's basically what we're here for. And I did include a grunting as well as letter in your package.
No. I've been able to gather up the ordinance of ninety-six. I haven't been able to find, working with the clerk, any of the, the county has an agreement with each, with the Lakeview, with the Paisley, with the Silver Lake, and the North Lake. I haven't been able, the clerk hasn't been able to locate any of those agreements. Would you be able to?
I think I actually have ours on file in the back of my filing cabinet.
Yeah. The reason I ask is for our own justification, I don't know what it says, but also when we make that letter saying we like to deviate from this, we need to know what that says so we know how to write that, essentially. If you have it, I know we have it in the attic someplace.
Okay, I will look. There's no guarantee. When I took over ten some years ago, or eight years ago, I remember redoing the filing cabinet, and I could've sworn I've seen that user agreement. But again, there's no guarantee, but I can try to hunt it down. So you have it.
Yeah, I've been working with Stacy trying to find it, but back in those days, everything was hard copy and file, and if you file it underneath health...
It goes away.
It's under H. If you file it underneath something else, she hasn't been able to locate it yet.
We can agree with this.
We can approach nine-one-one dispatchers if they have it.
That'd be excellent. That's one piece of information that I've said cannot play my hand. We'll do our best to get that to you soon, because we want to...
Yeah, we need to act on this pretty quick.
Yeah.
Well, I would think that if we put in this request, it would be good to have a letter, but it's any official ambulance services within our county, I would think, or any nonprofit ambulance service, and we can cover all of it. We have, I bet, it would be good to have that letter, but we know everyone that exists.
Well, we know who they are.
I doubt if Adel Plus even has.
Well, Adel Plus doesn't, that's part of Lakeview, it sets together.
Okay.
And they can't find those either.
I think Mr. Winters is probably correct. I think it just needs to state that you are in support of...
Of these variants.
This variance. I don't think it needs to specify. I think it'd be good to have for the records.
Yes. Yeah, we're right without having it. It's really nice to have it every time we write it.
Sure, sure.
So, reading, looking through this, trying to listen and read both, I'm sure you guys all worried about this the same as any of us. When you ask for the variance, then what's your exposure? Are you pretty well protected if the state says or allows this variance because of, you know, with social media, there's always somebody who's gonna say, well, this person here never got to serve the state, or this one, worst case scenario, constantly, did they make this decision? Are you guys pretty well protected if they give the variance so that your agencies are protected? This would be good?
Yes, yes.
We, I don't know about you, I don't know if you work with special districts or not.
We don't, but we're in the process of trying to get special districts.
We went to special districts, kind of hold their legal staff, and since it's so widespread in not only Oregon, but, you know, the United States, you know, lawyers have got it and pretty much, you know, have made a bulletproof anybody, can sue anybody at any time, but, you know, there's, and backing up a little bit, the catch-and-release policy, we're modeling that after the Pines. They did a tremendous amount of homework on that. We went to the state attorney general, cleared with them, so we're just going to take all of their information and incorporate it, you know, into the variance.
Yeah, as far as liability of the state, who is the authority? If they sign off and give you, it's on their back, huh?
Yeah, and that's why the Pines went that way, and, you know, it's better to steal something and try and admit it. That's my philosophy.
Well, you know that, you know, if it catch releases, there are...
No.
It's not.
But anyways, I understand that that's been an issue for quite some time, of people just using ambulance services for a ride to the hospital. And that makes it very tough for you guys, because your hands are tied. You know that, but you can't make that call, and you end up a six-hour, sometimes it's an eight-hour day.
At the weather's bad, yeah. I've seen that eight-hour day.
And so, how many other small rural places in Oregon have asked for variance? Have you checked into that?
You know, we haven't.
It doesn't really matter, I just thought if there have been...
We've had one in the past.
Oh, have you?
We have. And there weren't these stringent of requirements. And I think before, and I'm just going off what I understand from my predecessor, is a letter was just shot to you, and then we made the application with the state, and it was all done. And there was really no requirements at that time about the length of it, as far as now we have to have a lot of other pins in place to say that we're making some other improvement because it's a short-lived window for the variance. But before, it was just, you know, you just signed up basically for it.
How sure is that manual?
Say again.
How sure is that manual?
We don't know.
The current one, we, what happens is, is once we get the letter of support, we write a letter to the state. And basically, it's gonna follow, if you look on page two of our stationary, that plan of action, committed to volunteer staffing shortages, will pretty much, we'll add a few, you know, some more verbiage in there to make it very clear. But if you see in Veronica's letter, they needed a timeframe. Our needed action items, we're thinking six months to get in place, and I know I'm just getting my head on the action items, but near-term action items, years of implement, long-term action items, eighteen months is two years. The state may come back and say, okay, you only have this, this, and this as a timeframe. They set the timeframe. We're giving them what we think is doable for us. The problem we have is, you know, if we get more basics, if we get more people trained as basics, the variance goes away automatically, just because we'll have basic as the driver, and then we can operate ALS in the back with just two people.
So when you say that though, Gary, would it need to go away? Just because the ebb and flow over time, wouldn't it be better to keep it?
Probably the state's gonna put...
Outreach department.
Yeah, that's, pretty much, you know, it used to be, state changes, you know, so many things so many times, like Susan said. It used to be, you know, we called Donna Wilson, say, hey, we're in trouble. She goes, no problem. Gives us her superior, we give her back, and, you know. Now, it's, it has to go through, I don't know if she mentioned that here, but it has to go through a review board now, and, you know, who knows how long that's gonna take? Everything is pretty slow up in Salem.
You know, I don't think it would be a surprise to them in Salem at all. Like you say, it's a nationwide problem.
Yeah.
And I think that they're very much aware of what issues are.
It is not uncommon.
Yeah.
Well, Marion County, Salem, is struggling with the same issue. I mean, it's a big, small, independent...
You get out of a big metropolitan county, and you got rural county within that, that's a problem for us.
Yeah.
We need to help, use the tools that you say you need to build, keep the best services out there. I reiterate what Dan said, what you and the women do out there in volunteer is just unbelievable. Every one of us are impacted in some way, either close friends or family, that we rely on it. Whenever you hear the tone outs, and tone outs, and tone outs, you get a pretty soft heart, a pretty sad gut feeling, so, yeah, I think we all three understand the situation.
So the real question, Gary, is, and all of you, is getting the letter right. We're gonna, I believe we're gonna need some assistance to make sure we have a letter that you want to see that goes to the state.
I think probably we can get ahold of Donna Wilson.
Yeah, she'd be our best resource.
Yeah, great. She's retired, she was in, you know, the health system forever. She was a mentor, she moved into enforcement, and then got, you know, she just went, okay, this is my baby.
What time do you want this to go in? What kind of timeframe are you on this request?
Well, we wanna get it in as...
As soon as possible.
Yeah. And we'll get, we'll just make a phone call to Donna.
So legal counsel's here tomorrow, if you haven't wrapped the letter together.
Well, I always gotta suggest, just off the top, is if Donna could provide us with kind of the outline of the letter, Denise could give one of you her card, she could send it to Denise, we could have legal counsel review it, put it on our letterhead and get it done. I think we're all wanting to get the support.
If Donna's not busy, I'm sure she could do that.
Well, whatever her timeframe is, whether it's tomorrow, or it's two weeks from now, or whatever it is, I think we as a board want to act as quickly as we can to help make this happen.
We appreciate that.
We do. Did you want to go step-by-step through action plans, or do you wanna just read it and absorb? There's a lot to absorb.
You know, you drove all the way down here, but unless you wanna go through it, we want to ultimately support you.
I think one of the things that the county could do, part of our action plan is to get some instructors down and get an EMT class going. Typically, we're constrained to the, either Klamath Community College or COCC as far as when they provide EMT classes. We're in, Klamath isn't providing any EMT basic classes for this first spring quarter or whatever, you know, whatever their teaching schedule is, and COC's already started, so we're in the middle. What we wanna do is bring in a certified instructor from somewhere, get a class going. Now, we think we can use the school for the didactic. We can probably, you know, like I say, we're working on this, but we'll probably get ahold of COC or COCC or Klamath and have them set up the didactic through the school system that works fairly well.
And how much would that cost?
They're, probably, you know, the students, they're around a thousand, twelve-hundred dollar pop.
Yeah.
Each?
Each. Yeah, it's not, and see, that's the other thing. Each student costs us, you know, twelve, twelve-hundred dollars basically, per student. And we do get some grant funding, but not a whole lot. What we, one of our things we'd like to see the county do is, in terms of his budget time, maybe budget M, you know, X amount for training for the different agencies. Just, you know, whatever you guys can figure out. But, you know, we have a training budget, I don't know what yours is, but, you know, we have a twenty-five-hundred-dollar training budget, is all we can afford, which is, you know, two students.
Currently, the students pay the majority of those dollars, and then, like you said, there's a big timeframe of hours that they have to incur. The problem starts with that I don't have the money to take the class, so then if we can find some grant dollars to supplement that, then there's all those hours also, and I think if we could confront the first problem of the dollars, that maybe we could pull some more people in through advertisement, that, you know, we have grant dollars or whatever to pay for, you know, this class.
So could you go collectively? I don't know where we're gonna be able to go. So, could you all collectively, I don't know where we're gonna be able to go with this. I know, I believe we're gonna be able to help some.
Yeah, this is, you know.
But I'd like to see a figure from you folks as to what would be a, I mean, what you think would really make a difference.
Okay. Well, I assume that you would have to supply that to all the ASAs?
Yes.
Yeah, that.
Yeah, I mean.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, I just, you know, it's kind of been the philosophy of the board to try and, even though sometimes it's not, it doesn't look that way, try to treat the whole county as one entity. So, yes, but you have the most immediate need. You're here, you're talking to us. So, I'd like to see, you know, some figures around.
We can do that. We're in the budget season. We're in the budget season.
Just a small suggestion on that, come from your guys' side. If there was any dollars could come available, maybe more of a scholarship program that they only get the dollars if they get the certification.
Yeah.
So, a scholarship and then you have to stay with that certified for so many years and part of you pay the dollars back type thing. It takes quite a bit of work on you guys, but that's something that would appeal to me quite a bit more because then you attract the people that are going to put the time in to.
They're committed.
They're committed and they're going to, I think it'd make you some pretty good.
And they have some ownership. And also be aware that when we hold a class, we include everyone from Paisley to Silverlake, Summer Lake, Christmas Valley. We try to get everybody in there so we provide training for all of the north end. It's not just an isolated per unit type of training.
Maybe if you centralize that at Paisley and then give, they like to also, that's all.
Yeah, exactly.
We're such a huge county for the volunteers to be able to get the time to go, to put all these hours in. It, you know, we like to be all run, but sometimes it is specific to areas because of, you can only get people, I mean, to travel even from Northlake to Paisley is hour fifteen minutes. And so.
Doesn't allow you to have some other clutch.
Sometimes, very specific, I'm very good with that because of it gives more opportunity for their, just you have to probably hit all components of the county that sometimes.
Right. The last base, advanced class we did through KCC at Northlake School because KCC put up the big TVs and they broadcast through there. And that was utilized by, I think in the beginning, five students, but it dropped down to three on our end. But they videocast to several areas, so it wasn't a big deal for them. But there is a certain class limit I know that they have when we go through the college.
Minimum class.
Minimum, yeah.
And I'm probably getting into weeds too far. I'm sure you guys have probably checked with the outline hospitals, not only Lake County Hospital, but up into Chutes County and all them that maybe would contribute some money for training possibly because of ambulance services get to them and better we have the people on the ambulance. I don't know if that, I'm sure you guys have probably already been there. I see a smile.
These are, these are go for money.
Right. Plus Aaron Lake, who flies through St. Charles, also has donated money in the past. And Saturday, we're doing an ACLS class and they're putting it on. And so, we get training from them frequently. They're more than willing to partner.
I bet you with a scholarship class, you have to be certified for so long, something might be attractive for people to invest in that, is my thoughts. But anyways, I'm probably getting into your guys' world way too much.
No, actually, if you look at our mitigation plan, that's exactly what you suggested is what we're going to be doing. Providing, you know, incentives and then providing rewards. You know, if you show us your license, you'll get a five, you know, whatever the figure is, we should put out, five, how about a five hundred dollar cash bonus for your license? And if you keep it for, you know, a few years, that's a good five hundred dollars for Christmas.
Yeah, the problem is the graduation rate from the beginning of class till certification is actually pretty low. What would you say percentage?
Less than fifty?
Oh, yeah.
Way less than fifty.
And see, what we want to do is, if we can bring in immediately, you know, fairly soon, we can bring in an outside instructor. Two things. Most everybody that, except for new people that take an EMT basic, you know, there's adult learners and we just don't have the cognitive ability to sort of quiz quite as good as young people.
So, you're saying there's a component that you don't want to miss. You'd have to figure that out. And I appreciate that too. Yeah.
Ginger?
Patty's been checking some things out over here. Another thing to maybe think about is Oregon Tech because it looks like they've got an EMT program. It's true, there was some, but there may be. Yeah, but maybe some connection there.
Oregon Tech.
Yeah, Oregon Tech.
With fiber and everything to the school up there.
Right. So, we're trying to bring the education in, the instructors to them. But the problem is you have to have the bodies first.
Yeah, sure.
And you have to have the money first. So, and there's a minimum class.
Yeah. Well, I think we've got some good things here to work on and collect that work. So, we definitely want to get Denise's card too.
Okay.
So, by the process, because of, as board of commissioners, we set in this position here, it has to go through us, but it should carry quite a bit of weight if we ask for that recommendation as well.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes.
And I did, in your pack, I did include, I'm not sure which already it is or.
I think it's Donovan, I'm not sure.
It's in the back. It's stapled together actually, and it's the county's role in ASAs, the county-state relationship. I threw that in just for, you know.
Your off time.
We're a lot more than what we know.
No, that document is basically the, you know, the guts of what the state and county relationship is, so that would help quite a bit.
It'd still be nice, not essential, but it'd be nice to have the agreement because if we don't have the letter asking for exception, we need to know what we are accepting from our agreement.
Sure. I will, today I have time because I took the whole day out of the school.
Well, it has to be on file at the state or someplace, I would assume.
I would assume, but I.
We're gonna read dispatch after we leave here. Because if I'm asking for exception, I need to know.
You need to know what you're accepting of what?
Hopefully see you having, because I don't want to go in the attic.
Okay, well, we'll hunt it down, one way or another. Patty keeps everybody. Patty is our.
We're going through the curve.
And it's not.
Exactly.
If you find a statute of ninety-six.
State rules, but because you control our ASA, that's why you're in the picture.
Yeah. We designate the ASAs and we also designate in the agreements, response time. And that's what we ask for that exception to.
Right.
Any more questions? We'll do our homework and we'd like to, you know, I'd like to set a timeframe within two weeks. We can have things wrapped up in a letter from you and make sure Tornay will.
What did you say that time, a timeframe, you think?
Two weeks.
Two weeks, we have another commissioner.
Yeah, we have a work session on the eighteenth, a later board meeting on the nineteenth.
Thanks for the article.
Yeah, I think you got pretty much a nod from the whole board. We just need to get it out.
Just to make sure that you're clear, we'll need two letters, one for each agency. They can't be a joint letter.
One for Northlake.
Okay. Just, you know, the paperwork that you have are identical except for the eighth or eighth agency.
I'm just waiting for the new verbiage for the catch and release. I've heard that.
I thought everybody said that. How about this, respond and return.
There you go.
Respond and leave them there. I'm gonna respond and reject.
Lapine's, Lapine's verbiage is just say no.
Well.
And again, on that, on that issue, Lapine is, has said they will come down and give us classes on how to, you know, approach people and talk them into, you know, catch and release.
Evaluate the situation and make that call.
And how do we, you know, it's kind of a, you know, behavioral thing. We, if we just go and say, you know, you're not safe, I'm not gonna take you, that doesn't do anything good. They learned the hard way, he said, and now we, you know, we take the time to really, you know, engage with the, with the patient and give them options and that, you know, we've talked about the options we have up there and, you know, one is senior bus, we're gonna start talking to them about the liabilities of taking, you know, non-emergent patients. We've contacted what's it called, CMT, Central Medical Track.
Pretty cascade.
Yeah, cascade. And we're working with them. They said, we'll come down, but here's the rules, so we'll have that, you know, in our SOPs for just saying no, you know, we'll have the strict SOP, you know. We have to meet this before we can release because, you know, there is a definite liability issue there.
So, speaking of, sorry, pardon your. Speaking of liability, Lapine's attorney has got to this.
Yes.
It's the.
Yeah.
So, it's all connected some way with the county, so special transportation, Denise over here, which the money comes through for the special transportation. And if we're gonna start seeing more people with possibly minor things and everything, we could end up in, I don't know, do we have an AED on the buses or the things? Isn't that what's called?
AEDR?
I mean, not that, you know, something just sort of slipped through the cracks. I mean, if we're gonna sort of see that happening, maybe that's something that we're gonna have Joni here in a couple of weeks, maybe we ought to discuss having that.
Plus, you do many elderly and you should probably think about that anyway.
Yeah. Well, Denise is our go-to. She oversees the program and she works with Joni at the state. So, all questions related to that, we need to run through her.
And this isn't a new subject. We've been talking about this. Yeah, we've been, yeah.
You know, if we, if we have patients that, you know, really don't need to go by ambulance, you know, it saves that resource for us. If we can call on, you know, senior bus, you know, to transport them to the clinic if they just have a, you know, runny nose or a syphilis, you know, oops, I fell and sprained my wrist, as long as we, you know, follow our protocol and clear that patient, you know, taking the sprained wrist to town with by ambulance is, you know.
Definitely. Missed resources.
Well, it is.
Statistically, that's about twenty-five percent.
Yeah.
But that's still.
Then we can release. It's a burnout on the volunteers for responding to.
It absolutely is.
So, if we can reduce that unnecessary call out, you know, keep your volunteers.
And if they're out there on that one and we have other call outs, it's what's really scary.
That's only clear we have.
Yeah. We're down to, you know, our agencies are helping each other on every run, every run.
If you come to in here, would you like to mention what we discussed about those apps?
Yeah, Smallen, you want to take that? You're kind of a lead on that.
We've, we are now aeromedical resource rich thanks to the various companies that are providing helicopters and fixed wing medical. One of our concepts that we've been working on is establishing a paved GPS and flag heli spot, hard tan heli spot, approximately every twenty-five miles on the highway. We've done, we just completed one for free in, thanks to ODOT, in Summer Lake. So, that would give us a heli spot to carriage your hospital. We proposed one in the Valley Falls area. Paisley has a heli spot at the airport. Summer Lake now has a heli spot. There's one existing in Silverlake. And last but not least, we'd like to do it at the junction of Fort Rock Road and thirty-one on that big county line turn out there. Been working with ODOT and when they grind the road, there's a technical term for the grinders, I don't know what it is, but they can wet those things and then pack them down again and make up another hardtop. And they're willing to donate that to us. They'll give us the ability for, if we're running a basic in the back of the ambulance, that if there's a, a change in the patient's status or they need pain control, which a basic can't do, that they're no more than twenty-five miles from a marked GPS heli spot, that they can do an intercept where they can drive towards the helicopter, the helicopter can come to them. We're not landing in fields, we're not landing in places where there's birds like Summer Lake. And the big thing that kills helicopters is wire-striking, city wires. So, we'll make sure all these places are away from wires and concentrations of birds like to refuge. And ODOT's been very helpful in doing that. I don't think it'll be a major cost item. And now, if you're in the back of the ambulance, you can say, please send me a helicopter to landing zone alpha. The dispatcher knows where it is, the computer and the helicopter knows where it is, and you can make a two-hour run or a six-hour run and make two hours.
That's great. One clarification, Gary Brain told me the birds at Summer Lake aren't near what they used to be.
Having flown aeromedical for years, it's just case one.
You know, for some of those spots, if the state highway or the county's paving those areas, a lot of times, if it's all prepped and ready to go, it could probably be done pretty economically.
Yeah, and like I said, we got ours at zero cost.
And the spot there at thirty-one at Fort Rock, big open area, big idea place, bought through the site.
Exactly. And, I'm sorry, lastly, the folks in Christmas Valley get called to the clinic for transport quite a bit. We're proposing that there's some property that the county manages, or the clinic.
The clinic has a lot, a lot of rest site, but they do have other ideas.
We're proposing establishing a paved heli spot at the clinic in Northlake.
Call somebody as the chair of the board of directors.
Right.
Yeah.
In which case, it won't require an ambulance response. Silverlake is willing to donate, actually, our latest journey in training the folks in the clinic, a load of patients, so the helicopter can land, the nurse will get out, go into the clinic, they can roll the patient to the helicopter without any need for air medical resources.
How big is a helipad normal?
Hundred by hundred.
Hundred by hundred. Okay.
Very good. Well, we've got our homework and we'll, like you said, I'd like to do a two-week timeframe, so. Appreciate your time.
I do that. We'll probably put it on the nineteenth, Denise. That'll be our regular session and our legal counsel's here just so we're sure we're in the, you know, the right place.
Thank you so much.
Give you time to.
Okay. And if I get whatever information I need to. Oh, Denise, I'll run and grab that.
Okay. So, we wanted to know about it.
Sure. I will take care of it today.
Okay.
I will help her and see if we can entice her.
Get the rest in there.
We bought her, we're just buying train tickets, mystery train over Ted River and got her bed and breakfast night and stuff for the last section. Or, well, it was for a retirement, I guess.
You can reach out to her too on special transportation and call if you just want to give her a call, just to see what she's up to.
All righty. We appreciate your time again.
Appreciate you guys taking the time.
Yes. Appreciate all you do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Well, if there's nothing else that needs to come before the board today, we'll go ahead at eleven twenty and adjourn the whole session of April four.